Yes.
Okay. Let me get my papers in order. All right. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Tuesday, August 24 regular meeting. If you haven't already noticed, we've gone back to virtual. So get a shot. I'm going to do a roll call to start the meeting. Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Fuller.
Here.
Commissioner Ford.
Here.
Commissioner Michael.
Here.
Commissioner Sitten.
Here.
Okay, we're here. First order of business, I want to introduce our new assistant town manager, Austin Nance. She's in the middle of my screen. So waved to everybody. Austin started on. So she got to jump into the fire and go virtual almost immediately. You've seen her bio and I'm not going to elaborate on her bio, but I would like her to have the opportunity to say a couple of words and all I can tell you is welcome to the team, Austin.
Thank you. I am really glad. Thank you. So glad to be here. I got the memo on the blue shirt today, so that I'm off to a good start there. But I really have, I'm trying to hit the ground running, just absorb everything and learn as much as I can. It's a great group and I'm just happy to be here. Look forward to working with you all.
Here, here.
Thank you. Thank you. And Austin will be keeping regular hours pretty soon. Have you moved into your office officially and everything?
I am. I'm here right now.
Okay. I guess you, yeah, you are. There's at least three of us that are in town hall, but we are behind closed doors. So at this time, I want to read a proclamation for National Suicide Prevention Week. Whereas the week of September 5th through the 11th, 2021 is National Suicide Prevention Week, a time in which individuals, organizations, and the communities around the country join their voices to amplify the message that suicide can be prevented. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, and on average, there are 130 suicides per day. And whereas the past year has presented our communities with challenges and led to transitions that expected or unexpected, welcomed or not, can be unsettling, disorienting, and stressful. And whereas the pandemic has changed our fabric of life and major life changes are environmental risk factors for suicide. And whereas knowing the signs of suicide, finding the words to communicate with someone they are concerned about and reaching out to local resources. And whereas we know that connecting, working with, and supporting one another can help prepare us for the future. Whereas all community members are urged to play a role in suicide prevention and promote mental health and wellness as we strive towards zero suicides. Whereas September 5th through September 11th, recognized across the United States as Suicide Prevention Week, provides the opportunity to educate our community about the warning signs for suicide and how to reach out and connect to those experiencing an emotional crisis. Now therefore, I, Rusty Knox, Mayor of Davidson, do hereby proclaim September 5th through the 11th, 2021, as National Suicide Prevention Week in Davidson and commend its observance to all citizens. Proclaim this 24th day of August, 2021.
Nicely done, Rusty. And I would like to add a special word of thanks to Davidson Lifeline for what it does month in and month out.
Here, here on that one. And as school is starting back, a lot of these kids have have different experiences coming back from, from a year of shutdown. And, and the dynamics of going back to in-person learning with effectively a bunch of new people that you don't even know is going to be troublesome. So I think having Davidson Lifeline as an extra resource in our schools gives us another leg up on prevention and awareness. So I would agree with you, Jim. All right. With that, let's move on to changes of the agenda in the agenda and turn this over to Town Manager Jamie Justice.
Mayor, I do not have any changes to the agenda.
All right. With that, we will move on to item number four, which is our COVID response. And I'm going to defer to you, Jamie, at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, what I've done is prepared a little bit of a data report to give an update on the information and then also wanted to talk about what's occurred since we last met last week in terms of the indoor mask mandate. And then wanted to talk with the board so that you all can discuss what your policy options are in terms of furtherance of that indoor mask mandate. So that's what we prepared. So I'll just jump right in then. All right. So the last 14 days, there's been an increase countywide of laboratory confirmed infections, hospitalizations, and a slight increase in the percent positive. So since last Thursday, we had our last board meeting, we reported we were at 13%. So for the county, we're at 13.2% on percent positive. On the vaccination rates, a little bit of movement up in the right direction there. So now we're at countywide, partially vaccinated at 55% and fully vaccinated at 51%. So those are up one percentage point each since last week. The county's map for vaccination rates ages 12 and up from August 9th remains the most up-to-date map we have. And up in Davidson, our two census tracts, we believe that those are remaining the highest two brackets. So we're still in that 56.8% to 69.9% or 70 to 91.8% vaccination rate. So high, high part of the county. There have been 60 cases recorded in our zip code in the past 14 days. So that's from the August 5th through August 18th time period, most recent. And then our zip code continues to have the lowest COVID-19 cases per 100,000 residents in the past 14 days compared to the rest of the county. Hospitalizations in the county as of August 18th, that seven-day average has continued to go up, trending up, and now is averaging 392. So that's going in the wrong direction. So that's just a quick run-through on some of the data points that, again, kind of a mixed bag there while we are doing better in our area of the county in Davidson. But overall, our numbers are continuing to go in the wrong direction and then the county numbers do as well. So that's the data report. So kind of thinking about kind of what's happened since our last meeting, you know, the board met and we discussed this COVID data going, going, showing the numbers worsening. And then the town board did discuss and decided to implement an indoor mask mandate that would be effective immediately. So that happened last Thursday. And it would stay in effect for Davidson until such time as the countywide public health rule mandating indoor masks went into effect. So that's what the board action was from last Thursday evening. And then this same action to implement an indoor mask mandate was similarly adopted by Mecklenburg County and the city of Charlotte and the town of Matthews. So those are the entities in Mecklenburg County that took a, took that similar action. So after our meeting Thursday, we learned that the effective date of the countywide public health rule has been changed from August 28th to August 31st due to the county noticing requirements to comply with the statute. So this does not present any concern from Davidson's perspective as the town's indoor mask mandate that you all voted on Thursday remains effective until the county public health rule goes into effect or September 1st, whichever is sooner. So that, that, that's, that was a newsworthy piece after our meeting. And then in addition, over the weekend, Mecklenburg County also determined that language was needed to be added to better clarify that the indoor mask mandate applied to indoor public places in public and private business establishments, schools, which would be public, private, and parochial, and both public and private colleges and universities. So in addition, the county added language that this is applicable to businesses and establishments, whether or not they're open up to members of the public or not. So kind of those office facilities that may or may not even have customers coming in. This is applicable for there as well. And it went on to list some examples of that. So that's included in the documents attached to the agenda. It also extended the time period for this proclamation until September 20th to allow for that proper noticing timeline that must occur with the public health rule. So on August 20th, the city and the county amended their interim mask, indoor mask mandate to include that clarifying language that I just read about schools and places of business and extended its time period until September 20th or whenever the public health rule goes into effect. So the city and county have now taken their interim indoor mask mandate and made those changes that I just described. The town of Matthews amended their interim indoor mask mandate yesterday to extend the effective date, but they did not include that clarifying language that I read. So that's what Matthews has done. So this same language is clarifying language is expected to be added to the county public health rule. And it's expected to be on the county commissioner's agenda to act as the county public health board at their September 8th board meeting. And then it would become effective after that 10-day notice period. So because this additional time before it could become effective, that's the reason for the September 20th date. So that's why that date's important as when the, the interim mask mandates can go away and be superseded by the countywide public health rule. Man, that's a mouthful. That's a lot, a lot of information to change. So I hope, I hope that's clear that what's happened is the county health rule is still going to happen. They're going to likely amend it to include more clarifying language. The original county health rule will go into effect August 31st. The additional clarifying language will go into effect September 20th. And in the meantime, the city and the county have updated their interim indoor mask mandate to reflect that language. So the policy question now kind of going to, okay, town board, now that you know this information and what others have done since you met last Thursday, you do have some options here from a policy perspective. And what you could do is, do you want to really consider amending that indoor mask mandate proclamation that you approved Thursday to reflect what the city and county are doing and have proposed? So you do have a couple of options. One, one option is that you, you don't have to do that. You do not have to take further action. You've already taken action to do the indoor mask mandate Thursday that would stay in effect through that August 31st date. And that, that would happen until the countywide public health rule goes into effect. So that's going to happen anyways. And likely, the county public health rule with the clarifying language that I described is likely going to happen on September 20th. So those things are, are, that's where they're tracking. And so you do not necessarily have to amend the proclamation you approved Thursday night. Or option two, you can amend that proclamation to match that language and add that clarifying language and extend that time period to September 20th. So that would bring things consistent with the county and the city. And really, to me, is in keeping with what I heard the discussion and the policy direction from you all as a board last Thursday night. So if this language, you know, I think if this language had been in there originally, I think you would have likely have approved it Thursday night, right? So I think it's, you know, kind of continuing that clarification. And this really is in best explains really the, you know, what was intended and what is expected. So there's a messaging component with that. And I think it, it also leans towards what I heard from the board, which is we want to protect the public health of the community at the end of the day. So that's really the policy lens that I was hearing from you all. You know, arguably, the clarifying language is not needed in Davidson, based on our unique situation to some degree, you know, Community School of Davidson, Davidson Day, Green School, Davidson College, you know, there have indoor mask policies. You know, the small offices in town that may not be open to the public necessarily, they were communicated with by, with all our other businesses when, after Thursday's action by our economic development managers. So that has traveled through, keeping that messaging consistent with the, with the counties helpful. You know, so I think that's, that's a good thing. But, you know, to some degree, it's a non-issue in terms of what's happening in Davidson. And we don't really know those small businesses, if they're, what the compliance rate is for those kind of back office businesses. But we do, you know, expect that they would follow through with the local mandate. So there's some, there's some element with that. So I was just thinking about the town board's policy direction and decision from last Thursday. And really, you know, I think that for, we want to err on protecting the public health of the community and in response to this pandemic, then going with option two is in keeping with that, that line of thinking from last Thursday. So that's what I'm thinking would be the best recommendation is just do option two. Go ahead and amend the proclamation. It would be the third amendment to the proclamation. And it would add that clarifying language and extend it to September 20th. The board does not have to do that. And if you did not want to do that, then staying with option one with our mandate until the countywide indoor mask mandate goes into effect. And then that amended county rule will go into effect with that clarifying language on September 20th. So the town attorney does have that document attached to our agenda. It's the third, proposed third amendment. It's a draft, but it reflects that option two. So it reflects making those changes, what we, what we were talking about. All right. I'll stop there. So very sorry for all that information. Happy to try to clarify or answer any questions if I can do.
Yeah. And Jamie, also, let's not forget River Run Country Club, who is also a private institution. And, and first thing Friday morning, I got an email from them saying, hey, effective immediately per the town ordinance, mask mandate, everybody needs to be wearing masks. So hats off to them as well for voluntarily jumping right in or not, not seeking to look for a loophole and just jumping on it and rowing in the same direction as the town of Davidson. So seems like a no-brainer to me on option two. Staff recommend, is making the recommendation on it. And it's consistent with what we voted on last Thursday.
Agreed.
Agreed.
All right. Let me, David, you want to weigh in real fast, Jane? Either one? Before I ask for direction at this point, is this something that you're getting a head nod? I don't, I don't know that this is, is this still a vote since we're going to the third amendment?
Yes, sir. I would recommend we make, make a motion to approve that third amendment as presented, which that would reflect that option two that you all discussed.
All right. We don't, we don't have it in front of us, Mary Ann. I, I, I'm going to rely on, on, well, Jane's got it. I don't, I don't have it. I didn't print it off. But if somebody's got it and wants to make the motion, they can do so.
And we can pull it up if you all want to look at it a little bit. We can do that as well.
And I did the pre-read. You guys sent everything out on Friday and I looked through it on the weekend. I'm prepared.
Yeah. If anybody's looking on the agenda, it starts at page seven on the full agenda. That's the link on the, on the town website. So if there's any viewers out there who want to see what we're looking at, it's pages seven through, I believe, 11. Yes.
And Jamie, are you just looking for someone to say motion to approve the third amendment to the proclamation of the state of emergency in the town of Davidson?
That would work. And Mary Ann, I'd say effective immediately, just to keep that consistency. If you all are comfortable with that, add that to the motion. Yes, sir.
Effective immediately.
All right. So Commissioner Ford has made a motion to, to accept the third amendment to the mask mandate effective immediately. Fair enough?
Enter a mask.
Enter a mask agreement, effective immediately. I'm going to do a roll call unless, is there any discussion? Commissioner Sitten?
You're muted.
You're muted. David, you're muted.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
All right. It carries. Thank you for the care and concern. Thanks, Mary Ann, for digging deep in Jamie on this. And thanks for understanding that it's important to keep our town as safe as we can. With that, we move on to a time for public comment. Now, we're going to have several different avenues of public comment today. We are going to have the ability to come into the Zoom for public comment. We have some public comment that has been emailed, texted, or voicemail, one of the three, to Betsy. And she's going to read those.
A text, Mayor. We don't have a text option.
We don't, we don't have a text option.
We do not have a text option, but that's correct. So we have received three public comments. The first one, I'm going to promote Donna Pollak to the screen and she will share her three minutes. In one moment. Welcome, Donna.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I reviewed the Davidson Walk Affordable Housing presentation, which will come before you tonight. And I'm pleased to see it is much improved from the last go-around. I am still perplexed, however, by the language at the bottom of slide two, which reads, "In 2017, the DPO waiver provision for affordable housing was added based on conversations with commissioners and planning board members at this time. I understand that these discussions were the genesis for this change. But is my, it is my understanding that the waiver option was added as a text amendment along with many others that were part of the rural area plan and was approved by the Board of Commissioners at that time. As a result of becoming a part of the DPO, it now has the force of law. I think this is an important distinction and this should be made clear. According to our Affordable Housing and Equity Director, we have substantial waiting lists of those seeking affordable housing and calls are received every week seeking affordable units. So I am wondering why the developer would have a problem finding a qualified buyer within a six-month period and would be able to make a payment in lieu if unable to find one for four of these units. I would be surprised if we don't have well in excess of eight qualified buyers as of today, based on what I have heard at meetings over these last years. If a payment in lieu is made because such buyers cannot be found, I think it is important that this be clearly communicated to citizens. It would speak to the need for our affordable housing program and its high costs in terms of staff employment and Board of Commissioner time. We are about to embark on an affordable housing implementation higher, a plan hiring yet another paid consultant. Before we do so, can we look into whether or not our inclusionary zoning ordinance has helped affordability in Davidson since its inception 21 years ago? I looked up several towns comparable to Davidson in size and population, two of which Belmont and Elon are also college towns. These towns do not have an inclusionary zoning ordinance. These are average sales price in July 2021. Date for single-family homes, I should add. Davidson, $523,000. Belmont, $470,000. Elon, $415,000. Hendersonville, $350,000. And Henderson, $224,000. I realize that a sales price comparison as, at a point in time is not ideal. And I know that there is growth rate data available for 2000 to 2021, which would show a better picture. But I was unable to get access to this type of data or to the more detailed data perhaps available through the Case-Shiller Index. But I am sure that a paid consultant could provide this to us. I urge you to consider such a study. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. All right, Betsy?
And I'm sorry. Bells and whistles and moving people. It's a little different than being in person.
While we're waiting to add the text option, should we just give Betsy's personal sell-out to everybody?
No, Commissioner. Thank you, though. I appreciate that.
Just do, just thinking of you, Betsy.
Okay. We also received two public comments via email. The second comment received on Monday, August 23rd from Steve Sonberg. "Good evening. To learn lessons, let's review your 19th August special meeting and related activities. A town staff rep endorsed the county's proposed mask mandate on or about 16th of August. This was wrong. The rep should have deferred as his endorsement was used as one from the town to sell the proposal to county leadership on the 18th of August. A town and board endorsement of any county proposal with huge and controversial impacts and implications like this one is in fact a policy decision. You, our elected officials, should have made this decision before the 18th of August. You failed to do so and the rep erred by making this policy decision. Prior to the 18th of August, you should have evaluated the proposal publicly with respect to your past written and oral policies. You implemented in writing state COVID guidance both when a mask mandate was imposed and when it was lifted. You never even discussed an option to continue to follow state guidance, which is not to mandate masks. You should have at least talked about it. Time of the end this year, you stated variations of what you adamantly said just last month. We will follow the governor's rules and mandates going forward or whatever they may be. With these new mask mandates, you did not do this. You did not keep your word. Why should we trust your word in the future? Your mask mandate contains no Davidson-specific COVID data to justify it. Any town mandate should be based at least partially on town COVID data. You failed in this. You did not allow public comments. Special meetings are your most important ones because you take on crucial issues. Therefore, they are the ones at which it is most critical to seek public inputs, especially when you are proposing to abridge or limit personal choice or freedom, regardless of the reason. You failed at this. You compounded confusion for town residents and businesses because now conflicting mask guidance exists. Who do they believe, who do they now believe? You and the county or the experts at the CDC, the state of North Carolina, and adjacent counties, none of which have issued mask mandates? If you really want to do something concrete about the spread of COVID, stop the flow of illegal immigrants into our country. Most of the 1.5 million this year are not COVID vaccinated and 8% to 50% are COVID positive. They travel everywhere, including to North Carolina. What should you do? Call the governor repeatedly if necessary, insist he pass a town message to the president. Do your job, secure the border, and stop this flood of COVID into our country. Thank you." The next public comment was received via email on Tuesday, August 24th, from Barbara Bryan. "For 18 months, from February 11th, 2020 until today, I have left the printers, ink, and my investigative reporters' arms push me to find an answer to this burning question. What is it for Mooresville and Ardell County to turn over a valuable acreage just above Davidson on 115 to our town? As the last person in the room, no staff or any other citizen that night, my brain went tilt when I read item D on the Work Sessions consent agenda with the casual explanation that the plan might be accomplished in a couple of weeks by a charm offensive from Town Hall and Charlotte Water visiting Davidson Point citizens, most of who preferred their Wells water. A year and a half later, citizens inexperienced with Town Hall anticipate overload as a decades-old builder's plan allows 20-plus new dwellings to replace the site of water tanks, a four-lane express, sidewalks and bike lanes, significant land deals, and most to the ultimate benefit of Davidson. The initial tease was that this neat opportunity arose because Davidson and Mooresville coincidentally completed comprehensive plans at roughly the same time. There was no mention of Davidson's town manager's residence and former position as town manager in Mooresville or that a key town of Davidson planner assisted Mooresville's town plan. Personal conversations with both town managers assured me that other municipalities allowed inroads into county lines. Doing so is a great planning tool. There would be need, there would need to be annexation before it could occur. There would be plenty of notice and papers would have to be signed. Is permission from Raleigh required also? The Charlotte Water Transmission Main Phase 3 Extension Project Manager stated that all the papers needed to breach into Ardell County were handled in Davidson by our town manager and project's chief. Where are those papers? Who signed them? When? Where? What got such a huge project underway with so little full disclosure to citizens whose mobility and much more will be drastically affected? So although even octogenarian investigative reporters dislike laying down their pens, I leave this one to any active reporter or media to learn who devised and has been working this major project, with whom, for how long, and whose benefit. And most especially, what is in for Mooresville and Ardell County that Davidson gets to reap all the benefits? That is if we consider overloading 115 into Davidson a boon of good planning. And Mayor, that concludes the public comments we received.
Okay, thank you. And we will look at those and have the appropriate folks get back to those folks with concerns. have the appropriate folks get back to those folks with concerns. Let's move on at this time to Item 6, which is our consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Michaels made a motion to approve. I'll do a roll call at this time if there's no discussion. Commissioner Fuller?
Yes.
Commissioner Fort?
Yes.
Commissioner Sitten?
Yes.
Commissioner, Mayor Pro Tim Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Okay, consent carries. Thank you. At this time, we will move on to old business. The first item of old business is to consider the approval of proposed water sewer extension to River Run Phase 6. This, this item has been deferred a couple of times to make sure that the messaging got out to the residents at River Run per request from Commissioner Fort, and I believe that has, has happened, given it the extra couple of weeks. So I'm gonna turn this over now to Town Manager Jamie Justice.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The town did receive a request for water sewer extension from River Run Limited Partnership. So this is approximately 50 acres off of Shear Road, and what's proposed is Phase 6 of River Run of 90 detached and attached homes. The development would have to comply with the Neighborhood Edge Planning Area. And as you mentioned, Mayor, this has been deferred a few times. This was first brought up July 27th, and then at the last meeting, we decided to defer it to this meeting, make sure the word got out. And so back at that July 27th meeting, I talked a little bit about how water service would come from Shear Road, and sewer service would come up adjacent from the Rocky River from the south to the north to serve this property by Charlotte Water. And as we've talked about previously, the town boards approve water and sewer extension policy helps guide these decisions. And we walked through that a little bit and looked at the factors that the town may consider under the rationale section. And so I'll recap some of those briefly here. One of the factors is will the addition of the new line significantly increase traffic congestion? And I think with it being a 90-lot, low-density development with 45% open space that will comply with the Neighborhood Edge Planning Area would not significantly increase traffic congestion in that, in the area. In regards to the existing natural environment, the lot is mostly wooded now, so there will be some loss of trees. Much of the open space requirement will include the preservation of trees, and mature trees are targeted for preservation. So that, again, 45% open space must be preserved, which is good for the environment. And then also, the proposed development will have to meet the development standards in the ordinance related to the environment, watershed protection, floodplain, stream buffer, et cetera. And finally, consideration of any burden on existing infrastructure as a result of the new development. I don't see there being any undue burden on the ability to provide town services and also utilize the existing infrastructure adjacent to the site. Town services are provided to River Run now, which is adjacent to the site. So any, any development that goes forward would need to still meet the strict requirements of the Davidson Planning Ordinance. And so staff does recommend approval, does see it in keeping with the water and sewer extension policy. And really, the question is to the board and for consideration is to approve extending water and sewer utilities to this site. And so again, staff recommends approval per the policy. So the action we're looking for is to consider approval of the water and sewer extension requests to River Run Phase 6 per the town's water and sewer extension policy.
Jamie, does the staff see any downside?
Not from, not from our perspective. We've looked at this, and the fact that it needs to comply with the land use vision from, from the Rural Area Plan and from our planning ordinance, I think that's, I think that's appropriate. So we don't see any downside in terms of incongruence with what's been envisioned for development and preservation out in that area.
Jamie, confirming, we did get the formal communication out to the River Run Property Owners Association. I didn't actually see any information from them, so if they did more of a targeted email list that are people potentially directly impacting, maybe they did so. But just want to make sure we dotted all of our i's and crossed our t's, and if they chose not to send it out to everybody, then that's, that's their choice.
That's right. It got, it got to the River Run POA Board members and confirmed receipt, so yes.
Jamie, I'm assuming that they are going to do payment in lieu?
Uh, that's not, not known for sure at this time. That part of the process is to address that, how they would comply with the ordinance.
Okay. And the Greenway infrastructure on this, I'm assuming, will be built, correct?
That's right. They would be required to build the onsite Greenway and connectivity requirements that, that will be a part of the proposal, part of the development. So yes.
All right. Before I call for a motion, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've got a few, few things to, for us to talk about, but it was, is there anybody else that has any other comments or thoughts on this?
Go ahead, Dave.
Um, so the, 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 a couple of things that, that stand out for me in this are, first of all, where the development is, is occurring. So I don't know, Betsy, can you pull up? Are you able to pull up a map of this site?
Um, yes, can you just give me a moment, maybe keep talking as I work on it, sorry?
I can fill the dead air, no problem. Um, so, so whether it's the GIS map or, or if you have one of the maps in the comp plan or, but this is, this is the, so this is the far eastern boundary of EJ. So this, this, this property borders Barris County. And, and it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna border, I think we talked about in the last meeting, which is a development that I believe has been approved by Kannapolis, which is gonna, which I think was, was, was it 400, 400 acres?
River Point at Davidson, I believe you referred to.
I think that's right. So, you know, what, the result here would be is, is basically we tie River Run together with that 400, 500-acre development in Kannapolis. You know, and, and create one, one large uninterrupted swath of development. River Run is, is how many acres? Rusty? Rusty, do you know how many acres River Run is today?
No, I don't, David. It's gotta be 400 to 500 acres, I would think.
I would say at least. So, so basically, it kind of doubles the contiguous developed area in, in what today is an otherwise rural area. And gives it, gives it no buffer. So, you know, I think one of the questions we need to think about is, do we, are we, are we gonna, are we gonna build today to the edges of our, of our boundaries in the far reaches of, of our rural area? And set up what would be then as a development from end to end? The, the other thing I'd point out here is, is that it's in our, it's in our secondary, according to our comp plan, it's in our secondary growth area. So, so it's not one of our prime locations or primary growth areas, and, and we kind of leapfrog over the primary areas to develop in this further growth area in what is really the, the first year of a 20-year comp plan. I think the third, you know, the other aspect of this, I think we should consider, so, so one is the geographic impact, which, which is what I've mentioned here. The other, the other is, is, is the pacing of development that, that, that we're on and where do we want to be in terms of the pace of development? So in, in Davidson, in the last 30, 30 years, there's been 49 development projects. And today, there are 22 active developments in Davidson. And there are 29 that are either active, approved, or under review. So we, we, we've got, we've got half of all the developments of the last 30 years that are, are currently active in the town of Davidson. I think we've approved, and I think this would be 10 in the last two and a half years. So roughly 20% of, of all active developments of the last 30 years would have been approved in the last two and a half years. One of the things that is called out in the comp plan is that I think we were running about 3.8% growth rate in the last few years in Davidson as compared to the historical average of something closer to 2%. And in the comp plan, we, we, we call out that we want to return to something that reflects more of that historical average. Something closer to 2%. So I think those, those are two things that I would call out. One is the geographic scope of, of where we're guiding the development first, and then secondly, the pace at which we're growing.
Hey, David, just, just a question on terminology. When you say where we are guiding the development, what do you, what actions do you believe that we, the town, are doing to guide?
Well, we, we, I mean, this is it, right? I mean, we have the ability to decide, do we extend sewer and water in this region? You know, by, by extending sewer and water into an area that currently doesn't have it, what we're saying is, is that we want to go develop in this area, right? An area where today you can't develop. We, we, we want to install the infrastructure to be able to develop in this new area.
Okay, I was just clarifying. So by us responding to a request for development, that's interpretation of us guiding the direction of development. I just wanted to clarify what your interpretation was of guiding development. Thank you.
The distinction is, is, are, are we, are we developing based on somebody coming who, who meets the ordinance? Right? Or are we, are we doing it based on something that's not possible today? And then through this legislative action, making it possible, right? I mean, we, you know, I don't think we should duck from the fact that for 30 years, sewer and water has been the lever for where do we grow? Right? We've all talked about it. All the past administrations have talked about it. I mean, it, it has been the, the central growth directive tool of the last 30 years in Davidson. So I mean, are you, are you, Jane, are you suggesting that, that, that that's not the case?
No, I just think the terminology, when I hear somebody say that the town is guiding development, it's though we're saying here, go develop there, and if you do that, we'll approve it. I think there are developers who are seeking to follow our existing planning ordinances and are coming to us with projects. I do not then see that as town-guided development. It is, we have an existing planning ordinance that divides our town into the various areas and provides developers with specific requirements should they choose to bring to us a proposal. I was just trying to understand what your reference was to guiding the development. I do agree that our planning ordinance serves as the tool to provide what the requirements are for developing in our community. That is a guiding tool. It does not say, here, go do this. So we are not, we are not leading them in that, but then, once they follow our ordinance, I think then it, that is what we're elected to do, is then determine whether we are going to approve based on whether they have met the conditions as stipulated in our planning ordinance.
So then, so then these other, these other aspects that are called out in the comp plan that say you should, you should focus your growth here first, these subsequent areas, your, your growth second, secondarily, and, and subsequently. These ideas around, you, you, you've, you've grown at this rate, you should, you should now work back to grow at a slower, more historical rate. None of those get factored into anybody who comes with a plan that, that, that meets the ordinance or by your approval will meet the ordinance. How, how do you reconcile those pieces?
David, I, I would have to defer to Mary Ann on our legal ability to do that because I believe that those, those parts of the comp plan are directional in nature and not law creation in nature. I agree with you in principle that these things, you know, there's a preference in terms of how we would want to grow and where we'd want to grow. But other than rolling out something like a targeted conditional planning process, I don't know if there's a lot, as far as anything that gets put in front of us between now and when you do a major overhaul change of the ordinance, that, that would give us the ability to, to stop something like this from happening. And I think what we've heard from staff is, the staff is, water sewer policy is in place. Here's the, here's the items that says what we should take into consideration, and what I haven't heard from staff is, is this is going to be a problem, right? So for me, if Jamie said, you know what? The overall impact to police and fire and our infrastructure is more than we're going to be able to take on at this point in time, or the, there's this historical wonderful group of trees that's going to be completely clear-cut, that is going to have a total loss on our, you know, on our, you know, trees? Something along those lines, then I'd say, okay, then let's take this into account. But what I've heard presented in front of us for this specific project says, feels like there, there's nothing really legally we can do if they're going to follow the ordinance and the plan. I think what, what you're looking to do is more transformational and a, and a longer-term change that quite frankly, we haven't done over the past four years. And I wouldn't want to take something like that on at this point in time because the reality of the situation is, is that there's going to be a new majority of the board in six months or less. And I don't think we should take on anything that would, and vote on anything that would, that would be like that. I think we all sat in the stands, except for Jim, no, no offense, Jim, although you voted no. But we all sat, we all sat in the stands when the previous board voted for a hotel. And I, I, you know, I've tried to black it out, but I feel like one or two other things that they probably should have punted on, knowing that there was going to be a new majority, and said, well, we have the right and we're going to do it. And, you know, I, I said to myself, man, I'll never, ever act like that. So I just don't. David, I hear what you're asking for, and I know you've been asking for it for four years. The reality is, is we haven't done it. And to try and just go through the windshield on this one. It's not, it's not the right thing to do, in my opinion.
Man, just so I'm clear on what you're saying, you think it's illegal not to vote for a, a request for sewer and water extension?
Given the feedback that we just received from staff saying, we believe that we can handle it. We've looked at everything. There will be a TIA done, correct, Jamie? So any, any traffic, whether we, I could, I completely disagree with the TIA and what the dollar amounts are associated with what the TIA comes about. I think it's woefully low in terms of the, the, the funding that, that's required as a result of the TIA, but David, I haven't heard anything in here that said we, we would have a leg to stand on at this point in time to say no.
And this is versus, you know, Matthew, as you know, I mean, the last proposal that came before us for on the same parcel, and again, but that one was going to use an adjoining, had, what was it, twenty-one different points where staff brought to us a detailed issue of where this did not stand with our, our planning ordinance.
And I thought that was a good plan. Twenty-one points aside, I actually thought it was a really good plan and I thought it met a need. Developer wasn't willing to put the infrastructure in. The developer came in and said, hey, give us all the benefit of putting these two parcels together. But we won't, we, we refuse to incur any of the, the costs associated with it. And gosh, man, I, I wish we'd, we were in a position to be able to say yes to that one. It would have been a great project.
Been a hybrid, exactly.
Agreed.
So what, what I would ask then is, is I, I would ask us to give Mary Ann a chance to to determine whether or not we have legal standing to vote yes or no on a sewer and water extension. I think that, I mean, it seems to me that it would be prudent to do that. And then secondly, it would also give us a chance, I think we're slated to have the, the growth boundary conversation at the, at the next meeting. It would have us, it would give us a chance to have that conversation. Of which this would be, this would be particularly pertinent. So if we could postpone to the next meeting to provide for an opportunity for both of those.
Yes, David, if you had wanted to do this, why wasn't this a discussion when Matthew asked for a previous delay? I think we are now multiple meetings asking for a delay when, if this, I'm assuming that this same issue was a concern for you two weeks ago and four weeks ago.
Yeah. So Jane, if you, if you recall, I've asked for it for since we've been back, so.
David, I, I gotta say, we, we have, we have deferred this many weeks. The, the, the policy that we have in effect that we decided to, to implement, which was this board making the decisions for water and sewer connections versus Jamie's position prior to that of making those decisions falls in our, in our laps. And, and we're, we are at a point with this project where there's not there, there's no reason to have a discussion about the legality of, of extending water and sewer. We, we, that, that is under our purview as board to make that decision.
But Matt, Matt doesn't understand that to be the case. Matt, Matt believes, Matt believes that, that we, we don't have the ability to say no, that it would be illegal for us to say no.
I don't think that's what Matt said.
That is, that is what he said. Matt, is that not what you said?
Let me, let me try out a, a statement and ask Mary Ann to evaluate it. I'm, I'm not the town attorney. But, but it, it seems to me a, as I hear Matt, he is not saying we have no choice but to vote yes. But if you turn that around, if all the, in DCI, if all the requirements have been met, then it certainly drifts toward being arbitrary and capricious if we turn it down without a legitimate reason.
Well, but, but Jim, what, what we have is, is staff's reading of a sewer and water policy. And their, their interpretation of that sewer and water policy with respect to this decision. So if what you're saying is true, that if their reading is supportive, and this is an administrative decision, and then this legislative decision doesn't have any basis anyways.
Well, and, and see, I've got to look at the fact that, that we, we as a board, you as a board, you five as a board, not me, have the ability to make a motion for this project and vote it down as easily as vote in favor of it.
That's what we're saying, Russ, is that the other folks on this, on this, on this meeting don't believe that we do. And that's.
David, I believe that we do if Jamie came to me and said significant tree loss. If Jamie came and said, we've talked to staff and police and fire aren't going to be able to serve this and it has a it's going to overwhelm our infrastructure. I believe that we have the ability to, or our schools or whatever, right? So I think that I believe we have the ability and the authority to say no to the water and sewer policy. I have not heard anything as it relates to that water and sewer policy that says we should say no.
But, 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 yeah, but Matt, do you believe you have the ability to make that interpretation? Or do you only believe you have the ability to say, to do what Jamie says?
I think, I think we have the ability to make that own interpretation and as far as police and fire and, and the ability to serve, I'm going to rely on Jamie's expertise. I mean, he's running the town. Now, and he's running the department. I mean, for, for Jamie to say, we're fine on police and fire, and then for me to come in and say, well, I don't think we are, based off of what?
Well, what, whatever, whatever, whatever analysis is that you perform, the question is do you believe you have the ability to do it independent of Jamie?
I, I believe I have the ability to do it and I have nothing more than potentially anecdotal thoughts and feelings on it to, to say that I feel strongly, I would feel strongly enough to go against staff's recommendation on this one.
Yeah, I, look, I, I think, I think, I think the, the, the consequences of what we're talking about here, whether we, whether we have the ability to vote up or down a, a sewer water extension. And the basis for which we're going to do that. If it's solely just staff's reading of it. If, 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 if it meets the policy, we have to vote for it. Doesn't, I mean, a lot of these are, a lot of these are, are, are subjective measures anyways. So I, I, I really think we, 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 we need it, we need to make sure we understand it because for one, it, it, it it will determine the course of, of, of all decisions going forward. If what we're saying is that, that, that a, that a staff reading of the policy subjective qualifiers seem to more or less line up with, with the requests or the development. Then, then one, there's really no reason to vote. And two, it's a very clear signal to the development community that that there are probably very, very few developments based on the way the rural area plan looks today that would ever be, would ever be denied. And and, and that just sets the path of the court.
I agree with your statement. I, I, I mean, I think if, 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 if the barter farm and, and I know people hate using the example, but if the barter farm was under proposed development and it was on a rusty, how many houses you think we can get in, in, on that piece of property?
More than we want to count.
Right, lots. And Jamie said, no, we can handle it with existing and it's not going to be a problem. I'd say, Jamie, you're out of your mind. Go back and look at this again. We, we need a more thoughtful and thorough analysis of it. Ninety homes. I'm going to defer to to staff on this one.
But Matthew, in the, in the hypothetical you just raised, you would have an objective evidentiary basis to, to disagree with or even disregard Jamie's recommendation. And as it is, I think Jamie and the staff have done a thorough and thoughtful job of evaluating the project using the criteria that we set out. And so I don't think I have to follow the recommendation, but I am inclined to do so because I believe they do and are doing a good job and are fairly applying the standards that the board has set.
I agree, Jim, and I think David, that the, in terms of the public public involvement in the comp plan as well as the public outcry, for lack of a better word, at the earlier proposals around growth management, that that's where I have grave concerns about whether there really is a public mandate, quote unquote, to to go further than what the comp plan and rural area plan already do from a conservation perspective, which here is the forty-five percent set aside. So it, it feels like, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but it feels like you're looking for a public policy decision based on sewer and water rather than, than this being a transactional one based on the equity of the the applicant having met the criteria in the sewer and water policy.
Yeah. So I'm seeing a couple of things. One is, is that I mean, we, we just argued the two opposite ends of the same argument, right? We, we first started the conversation saying that it wasn't legal for us to decide. Then we said, well, in the case of our farm, it would be legal for us to decide. And you said there would be evidentiary evidence here in the case of the barter farm. And I'm curious as to what that would be. Is it the number of homes? And then if so, what number is that? And then Autumn, with respect to that last comment about a legislative decision. Yeah. So, so what, what you're referring to the ordinance, which says, when we develop in this area, this is what we should develop to. I'm referring to the same documents which say we should develop here first and there secondarily. And you're saying, yeah, Dave, but when it says, when I come to this area, I do it at any point as long as it's to this standard. At the same time ignoring this other part. And I just wonder what is the basis for that?
So David, I want to clarify, I never said illegally we couldn't. I just said, I haven't heard anything that would give us a ground to stand on legally to say, if we said no, here's the why and to be able to defend it legally. Because I don't see, I, I have clear thoughtful understanding of what our water and sewer policy is and, and the reasons for saying no. And I don't see anything that would make me inclined to say no. And I think Jim probably said it more artfully than I did. I don't feel required to say no. But I do, I, I, I think everybody's done their homework on this and the rules are the rules. And I don't see a reason why there would be a no that we could legally justify.
So, so Matt, the, 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 the parts of the comp plan that call for growth primary areas before secondary areas. Does you, you just, just choose to ignore those aspects?
David, I, I don't know what to say, man. I just the water and sewer policy is the water and sewer policy. We didn't add a bullet point to say, or anything else that we so choose. And, and to, to try and go and change that at this point in time for this specific development isn't going to work, just given the nature of how the state of North Carolina law works. So even if we wanted to say, we want to go change the water and sewer policy and say, hey, we're going to add a bullet point that says, or anything else for any other various reason. It's irrelevant to this conversation.
Okay. So again, though, you, you think it would be illegal to vote no?
I think that we don't have anything that I would feel comfortable sitting in front of a court of law saying, I voted no, and here's why. So when we look at Pot Street, no problem sitting in front of a court of law, hand on a Bible, saying, here's all the reasons why it was a no. This one, I just don't see it.
So what, what I would ask is, is, is to give our town attorney a chance to review that and see if, 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 if she feels that that is in fact the case. I, I don't, I don't want to vote, I don't want to, I don't want to put a vote one way or the other that it's illegal either. So if, if we have serious concerns about the legality, I mean, I, if, if that's the case, I mean, I, I've voted, I think, eight times in the last two and a half years. And I, you know, there's no reason for me to continue to do that if in fact that is the case.
I, I would agree with that statement.
I wish, I would, I would, I, I would like to, yeah, I would like to give her a chance to do that. And, and, and guys, look, I mean, I'm asking just for the same, same courtesy that I think was asked by the commissioner last, last, last meeting. So if you guys, if you guys would extend the same courtesy to, to, to give us a chance to do that and to, to, to discuss the urban growth boundary. Before we meet, vote on this the next meeting, that would be, that would be appreciated.
And, and just to be clear, we're not, we don't have a presentation on the urban, but growth boundary, but we do have a presentation from the growth management subcommittee that's looking at the tactics that the board kind of directed them to look at. So they'll be reporting on that at the September fourteenth meeting. So there's no, there is no formal anything on the urban growth boundary.
Jamie, we're in the last.
Water and sewer. I'm sorry.
The last, in the last meeting, you, you said it would be slotted for that, for that meeting.
That's right. If anybody wants to bring up any tactic or tool they want to utilize after hearing from the growth management committee on what the board tasked them to do and then decide if the board wants to go a different direction.
No, Jamie, Jamie, we, Jamie, we can go back and look at the video, but we, we said very specifically at the last meeting that the urban growth boundary would be a topic for discussion in this upcoming meeting.
Commissioner said, I said, is that's where you can bring that up or what you've charged that committee to work on, which is different than an urban growth boundary. So that's where we were going to report out on what the board asked us to do. And then you all as a board can decide what you want to do from there.
Mayor, can I ask a procedural question?
Yes.
At this point, if I were to make a motion to move forward with the item as presented, would you see on a procedural basis that if then Commissioner Sitten wanted to then insert a request for delay, that we would then you know, have the motion standing as presented and then him entertain a new motion, have a vote on his motion and then potentially either come back to the original motion? How does somebody who is better at the procedural stuff and parliamentarian rules?
I can try to weigh in that, yeah, there can, Commissioner Sin can make a motion to defer to the next meeting. And then that's a procedural motion that you all can then vote on. And if that passes, then that, that can happen. If it doesn't pass, then you can vote on the actual water and sewer extension request, or somebody can make a motion on the water and sewer extension quest that, that's in front of you now.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion, but that's what I was asking is whether if you know, if David wants to be heard and wants to have a motion, can he do it after I have made the motion or should I defer to him to allow him to make his motion first?
Or if I'm not mistaken, we could adjust to, to reschedule it for the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to. Yeah, I think we need the board to decide what you all want to do. So I need a vote about what you want to do with this agenda item. So Commissioner Campbell, really, you can do it either way if you want to.
Okay.
Motion wins at the end of the day.
Okay, I'd like a motion, um make a motion to approve the proposed water and sewer extension to River Run Phase Six.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
So so I need to make so so I need to make another motion now, Jamie, is that right?
Yeah, you you could make a procedural motion that says a motion to defer this item to the next meeting. And then we'll need to deal with that procedural.
I I would, I would like to make a procedural motion to defer this item to the next meeting. And guys, I really don't, I don't appreciate being put in this position. I mean, you you all pulled this from the agenda in the last meeting based on a request that Matt had because he was on vacation. And I'm now asking, based on the substantive issue, defer it for two weeks, and I can't get the same courtesy?
Hold on, I I didn't request anything.
That was the way it was described to me as what from the meeting. And and quite frankly, I was asked about it then.
That's that's fair. Just so you know, it's the first time I'm hearing about that's the reason why I was pulled.
I thought I thought the language was specific to Commissioner Commissioner Ford's request to have the information be shared with the River Run Property Owners Association and nothing.
That's right. There was a delay with getting that to them, and so allowing more time for it to be out.
So what was, was there a vote for that for that? Was there, was there a polling of this of the of the commissioners for that?
No, that was at the changes to the agenda.
Okay, so stands, guys.
All right, so.
I will tell you, Rusty, may I have just a word?
Yep.
Uh, thank you. I I will tell you, I I support the motion as Jane has made it and I am inclined to vote for it. However, uh, as a courtesy to David, I would I would join him in asking that it be on an agenda two weeks from now.
Thank you, Jim. All right, so where we are at right now is is Commissioner Campbell has made a motion to approve water and sewer extension to Phase Six. Commissioner uh Sitten has made a motion to defer this action for two weeks. So at this time, I've got to do a roll call to the deferment of Commissioner Sitten's motion. Am I correct?
That's correct, except, Mary, it's to the next meeting, because I believe it's more than two weeks, just technically September.
To the next meeting, okay.
Yes, yes.
If we were playing Robert's roles, I think this would technically be a motion to table for a specific time.
Okay.
We can do it that way.
Are you fine with that, David? That nomenclature? Okay, so I'm gonna do a roll call on the motion to table. Uh, Commissioner Ford?
I think I'm gonna say yes, because I think we're gonna get to the same outcome in two weeks. So yes, I will give David two more weeks. And I think we also need, um, sorry, I know this is a lot, yes, but I think we're also gonna need a closed session then to discuss it.
Commissioner Michael?
I'll say yes also in deference to Commissioner Sitten. Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell?
I'll defer, but genuinely believe that this had the opportunity to have been brought up before, and I find it extremely disingenuous to then turn around and claim that this was a call based on Matthew being on vacation. So that was out and out not correct. But if this is going to be an issue that you will feel that you have not been heard, Commissioner Sitten, we will listen and we will hear you. But on this particular issue, you had the opportunity, when every other commissioner had the opportunity to raise this issue, when there was a delay on this, and you have waited until the delayed time now to raise your issue.
Commissioner Fuller?
I've stated my rationale, my vote is yes.
Commissioner Sitten?
Jane, you 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 wrote eight paragraphs. You wrote eight paragraphs to me about my inability to attend the meeting when I was on vacation.
David, it was the issue that you claimed to only.
Second, wait a second, I'm not finished. I think it's my vote. I think it's my vote.
It is your vote, not your discussion time, David. It's your vote.
It is my vote. I do, I don't have a chance to see to see comments when I have, when I'm, when I'm voting.
We we normally discuss before we vote. Would you like to discuss now?
Please.
Okay, go ahead.
I go on vacation. At the last minute, I'm not able to join. And you guys take take the decision that that I had been a part of for months on fighting Leno to pay their fine. And you switch course in one meeting or turned eighty degrees the opposite direction. And then and then and then you write me eight paragraphs about my inability to attend that meeting, and you blame your vote. Blame the outcome of that, my inability to participate in that meeting. And then you sit here today in unwilling to give me the same courtesy of Matt, who was on vacation and had this call, who, by the way, is a resident of River Run. And then you turn around and you say, David, it's disingenuous that you brought this up. Having said that, in the last two or three meetings, I have asked repeatedly for the urban growth boundary discussion, of which this is the whole point. Village-centered growth is what we say we do. And yet here we are in the most extreme boundary of our territory building before we build anything else. It's the whole idea of urban growth boundary. So count how many times in the last two meetings that I have raised that and asked that it be discussed with specific reference to this. That's why, Jane.
All right, so.
I vote yes.
The motion to table has carried. I I I will say that that the outcome of this two weeks is not gonna change your decision at all, David. Am I correct? You can vote no, you can vote no in two weeks.
If if if, and so it's one of the, it's one of the things that I want to say here is is to Mary Ann. You know, we 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 need, we need a, we need a clear legal opinion here as to as to whether we can vote yes or no or water extension. So uh, you know, we we, Mary, I I think we need to make sure that you have what you need in order to be able to to confidently opine on the, on whether that's, whether that's a decision that we're 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 able to make.
It sounds like to me that there are two two different points here. One is, do we have legal authority to make that decision? And in terms of can we or can't we? And there's a a clear yes, we have that legal authority. And then there's secondary piece of that, as I'm hearing it, David, is what Jim and Matthew both articulated, which is their own conscience and decision-making based on the sewer and water policy and the factors that were presented to them and whether they could or couldn't within their own conscience and decision-making based on those factors. But I don't think there's any question, I don't think, as to the legal authority of whether we have that authority to make that decision.
That that's my biggest concern is is we changed the policy and took the decision away from the town manager to this board four years ago. And now, because we've got this project in front of us, you want to question the legality of the decisions that we've made on water and sewer extensions for the last?
No, I'm not, I'm not questioning it. What was told to me tonight was that we didn't have the legal authority, or at least there was a question about.
You misinterpreted the statement, David.
That, no, I don't think I did. I don't think I did. It was said two different ways. One was, I don't think we have the authority, and then it was subsequently said, well, based on Jamie saying that it seems to meet the ordinance that we don't have any authority to say no.
All right, the motion is carried to table this. Mary Ann, do your research, make sure to come back with us in two weeks and and give us a determination on if we have the legal ability to approve or deny water sewer extension.
And if if I could add, Barry, and if you could circulate that beforehand, that would be helpful. And if and if you run into any problems, if you could just just raise the flag.
Mayor, could I make a point of order clarification?
Sure, you can.
Um, made several allegations. The one was the clear point of the email that you keep referencing to the the eight paragraphs. This was specific to the fact of not just one meeting when you were on vacation, but the specially called special meeting on April the first. So it was two sequential, two meetings, two weeks apart that you missed. The one specific meeting that was a closed session on April the first. There was no communication from you in advance, et cetera. We then showed up for the next regularly scheduled town board meeting, which we got word from you in advance that you were on vacation. The point of my eight paragraph email was to suggest that you, as one of our two representatives to that discussion, missed the singularly focused closed session meeting that lasted for more than an hour and a half. And because of your absence at that closed session meeting, we did not have the benefit of hearing from you. Nor did we then have the benefit of hearing from you at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which I completely understand that you were on vacation. Your vacation was not associated with the the special scheduled um, the special closed session meeting that was scheduled for the April the first. That was the intent of my email. If you took it as anything else, my deepest apologies. My issue was the fact that we went for six weeks with absolutely no communication from you on that very important issue. And I felt that 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 was the issue. I cede my time back for my.
You know why, do you know why I missed the special meeting? You know why? It it only became an issue after the vote. It wasn't an issue when it happened. It wasn't an issue subsequent to happening. It only, it only became an issue when the political blowback happened.
No, I don't think any of us got any communication for your missing of the April one meeting.
Okay, at this time, we need to move on. Um you you guys may want to handle this outside the uh the realm of uh public meeting, and you can email each other back and forth. And if somebody wants to do a records request, they can do so, but uh, at at this time, we have more business to conduct. Thank you. We move on to item B, which is to consider the approval of the Davidson-Walk draft affordable housing plan. I will turn this over to Eugene Bradley, our Housing and Equity Director.
All right. Good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing?
We're great, Eugene.
They're great. And Austin, welcome to the town of Davidson.
We have a fun group. This is good. Debate and discussion is good. We get better results that way, so. Uh, but I I wanted to talk with you guys regards to our Davidson Walk affordable housing plan. And I'll be doing a short presentation on that to give you an update kind of where we are and of our recommendations. Can everyone see uh? What do I have up?
Yes, sir.
So our Davidson Walk affordable housing plan, uh, this is a project that's part of the Davidson Bay's phase two. Uh, this is their last kind of component of that. Uh, we've had several projects from them from uh the some, the summers. Uh, well, Davidson Bay's plan, and so this is the last phase of that. This kind of just gives you a kind of a quick history of kind of decisions that were made throughout kind of dating back to two thousand and seven to current dates. Uh, one of the the things that I wanted to point out is our housing equity board had a chance to review this plan and made a recommendation for uh to approve based off of uh what was presented in understanding kind of legality, so what we can get from an affordable housing standpoint. And so we've been working uh with the developer. They've been very gracious in the process. Understanding they have timelines that they are trying to hit on their end, but we were able to work through a lot of different items there, and we were able to uh land here. Uh, which is basically they're going to be able to uh operate affordable housing units um on the ground to satisfy their affordable housing requirements. What we're able to do is actually extend from eighty percent um to one twenty. That allowed a little bit more flexibility for the developer um in order to um kind of finish out those units. Again, legally, they're able to just go ahead and pay the payment in lieu, uh, but they decided to actually continue to work with us in the process and offer eight. The last four uh specifically have some flexibilities there and some assurances uh for both. I think what's really important as we kind of start to work with our development community is a lot of flexibility in in certain areas in order to get the units on the ground. I think that's probably the most important thing I want to stress is uh getting the units on the ground uh and going, moving forward with uh really building our affordable housing stack. And so this is some of the breakdowns that kind of will will normally are required uh when it comes to the affordable housing, if they were going to payment in lieu route or what they would normally uh that they can do literally, honestly, right today. Uh, and so we understand that what that cost looks like or that that uh payment will look like. In this scenario that has been presented before you, um, they will be building eight units. Uh, what what was required is want to also uh keep this in mind, they were required to do seven, and now that they're eight, are part of their uh, a product really negotiating over the last few weeks. And so that range is going to be from a hundred seventy to to two ninety-one. Uh, and so they all will have deep restrictions, with the exception of the last four, if we're not able to locate qualified buyers. And so this also gives uh us the ability as the the town slash some of our partners to locate buyers. So it really puts the emphasis on us to to really fill those spots. Uh, I I'm, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to do that, but this just also offers some flexibility for developer worst-case scenario. And so um I think either way, we are actually are up um by actually guaranteeing our four units, but also of being to have a payment in lieu if the worst-case scenario happened. Uh, so the first four will fall in the range of eighty to one hundred of AMI. The last four will fall in the range of a hundred to one twenty. Uh, this is ideally going to be for, you know, one to two families, households, and this will give you kind of the range. Uh, so I I get I really have been grateful for a willing developer to kind of work us, work through this and versus just kind of in the check. We know that's been somewhat of a trend. And so I I think we're kind of turning the tide. We're really want to make it an environment where we can work with folks to get units on the ground. And I think this is would be uh something that is a win for for the town specifically. Uh, and so with that, uh, I'll open up for questions. Um, the actual be uh to approve uh the Davidson Walker for the plan as presented.
Yeah, Eugene, great job, right? Glad glad we've got the eight back, and and I think Donna made a good point about the the extreme backlog of uh people. So it would be, I would consider it a failure uh from our our town of Davidson if we weren't able to fill all eight. So start lining them up now, Eugene. Make sure you got sixteen people ready for those eight, just in case some fall through.
We're already starting.
But this is, this is exactly what I had hoped for. Um, so thank you, and I'm glad we pushed back. And uh, and I think we came to a much better outcome than two, you know, what was it, a month ago?
This is also what I hoped for, and I want to say thanks to Jamie and Eugene and the developer. Uh, thi- this is a good eye, a good example of working together to solve a problem and not just going off in separate corners and staring across the ring at each other. This is, this is government in action in a good way.
Good to Matt's, to Matt's comment, uh, Eugene, do you, do you feel, do you feel comfortable that we can, we can get these, these eight filled within six months?
Yes. Yeah, I I think six months is is a long period in this market. Uh, so I think we have more than enough time. Uh, if it was two months, maybe a, maybe a little nervous there, but having six. maybe a maybe a little nervous there, but having six in this particular market, I feel confident we should be able to fill those.
Slightly technical, is it closing within six months? Is that the the metric here or?
I think how we state is is under contract, you know, within those six months.
One 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 idea to raise here, and and I, you know, I don't know what the board would think of this and nor nor the developer. But one thought here would be maybe to 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 for the town to reserve the option to buy those four units if we didn't get them there within six months. We may not exercise that option, but to retain it, if we feel like we need a couple more months to get it done, that we retain that option as opposed to receive just the payment in lieu funds.
Yep. And we've been working with partners outside of this. We've had conversations with the college. I mean, maybe some of their participation and seeing some of their goals as far as their housing program. So we're very confident that we have several backup plans that we can engage if we feel that we can't fill those six. So I agree that we honestly explored several different options and some of our partners as well. And so I think this is kind of how we got to this point where we felt comfortable.
So they they would be so like, so the Davidson Housing Coalition, for example, would be an eligible buyer.
Yes.
Okay.
They would, yes.
And would the town, to David's point, which I think is a solid point, David, would would the town of Davidson be an eligible buyer? If you came to us and said, hey, five months and we've only found seven, there's the one left. We're requesting your approval to use affordable housing funds, payment in lieu funds to to buy this. We would have the ability to do that, correct?
Yes. And one thing I want to stress is the restrictions will still be on those properties. And so that I think that's kind of the key piece. And if we have it outside of those last four, we will still have the deed restrictions a part of that.
Eugene, what's the timeline of the deed restriction? And by the way, I echo everybody's previous comments, but what was the the time on that?
So typically, we do a 99 year, 30 to 99 year. We're actually are looking at kind of how would we find that? We've had several discussions already of kind of flexibility within deed restrictions. With the 99 year, you're guaranteeing at least three generations of affordability. I think we need to kind of look at that in a little bit more details of where that happens in town. If you're a little bit further out, the deed restriction maybe has a little bit more flexibility versus you want to be able to guarantee. You know, places that are close in town to amenities, you want to have a little bit more time associated with those those deed restrictions. So we're more likely looking at a 99 year, but we do have some flexibilities within that.
Okay, but 30 years was looking at your your floor of that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Eugene, thank you for the hard work and going back to Hopper and and thanks to Hopper for hearing us. And I'm glad this worked out the way it has. At this time, I need a motion to consider approval of the Davidson Walk Draft Affordable Housing Plan.
I make a motion to approve the Davidson Walk Affordable Housing Plan as presented.
Autumn, did you want to say something? I saw you go off mute and then I saw Jim raise his hand too. So I'm seeing a lot of action.
Go ahead, Jim. And then I have.
I just had one phrase. I wanted to make sure it said as amended to include eight units on the ground.
Thank you, Jim. And I just wanted to clarify that to to David's point about a a potential town purchase as an option, we don't need any sort of write a first refusal or write a first offer there. We would just stand in line or not in line with other potential buyers. Should that presuming that doesn't come to pass, but should it come to pass? Is that correct?
Yes. If, Mary Ann, correct me if I'm speaking out of line, but yes.
I was thinking the same thing, Eugene. Like, I think that's that's the way to handle this as opposed to, yeah, work at that.
Okay.
It potentially falls into the same threshold of the the other homes that we've bought already.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
All right, Mayor Pro Tim Campbell has made a motion. I'm going to do a roll call. Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Fort.
Yes.
Commissioner Sitten.
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
Yes.
Thank you. It carries. Move on. Item seven, new business. I'm going to call on Economic Development Director Kim Fleming to talk to us about our downtown small area plan process. Eugene, thank you again. Hello, Kim.
Mayor and Commissioners, let me pull up my screen here for you. Okay. Okay, so what you have in front of you here are the items that we are going to cover tonight. First off, the downtown small area plan was one of your strategic plan items identified at your retreat prior to COVID. I should mention that this item would have come before you earlier if not for the global pandemic. So we are going to try and get this to you as quickly and as thoroughly as we can. I want to stress that the small area plan that you described at your retreat and what we're going to deliver to you is not a traditional development plan, but one that focuses on connections and improvements. In fact, our comprehensive plan directly addresses developing a downtown plan, which could include the assessment of existing conditions, including the identification of opportunities and actions and initiatives to improve the district. I also want to recognize that we have multiple efforts that are going on at this time or have recently been completed, including the Historic Preservation Plan, the Mobility Plan, the Pedestrian Safety Committee, the Downtown Gathering Space. So we don't want to recreate any of that of the what's come out of those projects. We want to utilize those items and those can be the start of some of the design topics for our charrette process. As an example, during the Historic Preservation Plan Stakeholder Meeting, the Downtown Gathering Space. People love it. It's well used. And a question came up about the possibility of extending that space and that energy down Knox Court instead of perhaps out into the parking lot of Summit. So that that's one topic as an example that we could get some more information on. I did want to show you the area that we are looking at. I'm sorry. Okay, Jean. So the the map of the area you see in front of you and it goes from the Cotton Mill down to South Main. And again, from the comp plan, the downtown plan should connect nodes along South Main and adjacent downtown areas through strategic infrastructure and investments. So that is the this is the area that we will be using for the study area. For this meeting, I just wanted to give you an overview of what the process would look like. We are obviously speaking to you tonight. We will plan to talk to the Planning Board on August 30. We're planning on a public engagement period of about six weeks. And then hopefully getting an initial report back to you at your October 26 meeting. We are going to utilize staff and the expertise on our Planning Board to help run the charrette process and public engagement. And our goal is to deliver to you short, mid, and long term recommendations that could be adopted into the budget and the CIP process. So that's really just a quick overview of the process. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or comments or anything that you would like more information on.
Kim, I'll just make a comment really quickly that I appreciate the follow up, recognizing a COVID pandemic in the middle, worldwide pandemic in the middle. But I appreciate the follow up and I appreciate you all looking at this not from a sort of one size fits all perspective for small area plan. So it sounds like you're being kind of creative and innovative about what the needs are and how we can meet those needs within the town. So thank you for that.
Thanks. Okay, well, we'll look forward to reporting back to you all in. Oh, yeah, sorry.
Before you leave, Kim. One related update here that I'd like I've read it a couple of times and and it's a moving target for me. And you guys may have have told me the answer a couple of times. But but the 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 historical survey that our friend did.
Mary Ruffin.
Mary Ruffin. So she's completed a survey. I remember that much. And and then and then with respect to our decisions to bring up section two and section three. I know that's not exactly right, but the west, the west side and then what I would call, you know, the old Davidson is not right, but that section of Davidson. So how do those get factored in here? We, you know, I know we just had a tear down on Concord, which I believe would be in that in that survey, that latest survey. And, you know, I think if we if we would have voted to bring it into that historic local historic district, that we would have had a say in whether or not that got down or at least the timing for which would have gotten brought down. So so somebody can just speak to that with respect to this.
Vote a friend.
Yeah, I think we get a little bit more time there, but I think they owned it for over a year. So Autumn, correct me if I'm wrong, but after a year, you can knock the home down unless it's been designated historic landmark. There's no tear down. You can't say no to never tearing it down. And I thought it only delays it a year, which.
The current North Carolina law for for most communities and other than those who have created special legislate or asked for special legislation otherwise is a 365 day delay from a a permit decision or certificate of appropriate decision, not from a point of ownership. But the question is a good one, David, and maybe less relevant to Kim's current topic, but Jamie or Jason, in terms of voting a friend, might have an update on where our consultants are with the overall Historic Preservation Plan, which I presume would have recommendations based on recommendations on further designations. But it was a heartbreaking heartbreaking home to see come down on Concord Road.
Yep, the update is the store preservation plan has been moving along. They're working on the draft plan. They are considering an early action idea to to recommend the local historic district expansion as a step ahead of plan approval. That's what they're discussing right now. And but the consultant is using all of Mary Ruffin Hanbury's work. So this is being put to use through that process. And we are planning an historic preservation plan update to the board in October, at one of your meetings in October. So that's that's my update.
Yeah, and I think I think the, sorry, Russ, I think the the you know, the other piece of it is, is that it it gives us, one, the ability to go to the legislature and ask for something that is stronger than a 365 day hold. And the other thing that it does is that it gives us some notice that, hey, this is being considered, right? I think they they would file a permit, I believe, and and then we would have the opportunity to delay it for 365. Right? Isn't isn't that legislative, that 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 decision to 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 delay or not delay? So anyway, so my my my, the part B of that question, Kim, was was how how does how does that that historic district plan relate to this?
Um, so certainly that's that's an underpinning of the entire area. And that I I think what you're asking in terms of are there additional areas? First, to clarify, I think that will be handled under the Historic Preservation Plan. And I think this downtown small area plan, what, for example, you could see coming out of as we ask for information on different design topics that historic preservation is embedded as a piece of that to begin with. I don't know how else to explain that other than to say that it it's almost like that's a nonnegotiable, like we, this is the historic frame of our downtown that's not going to change. Does that help at all? Autumn, I see you nodding. I don't know if that answers your question.
Best thing that you said was that that was a nonnegotiable.
Okay.
That was checked. But but it did occur to me that that actually the the survey is different than 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 the area that this plan.
That's true. That's true.
And and this this plan is is part of the national, is that the national? What what is the downtown today in terms of designation?
It's got the local historic district in the kind of the core part.
Okay.
It's the national register that goes further out that doesn't have that protection.
Right.
Is there, is it, is it an exact overlap, the the the, no, the historic district of downtown and this this outline is not?
It's not an exact overlap because the local district is is the core of historic downtown. And like, like, I think Jamie or you just said, the national register is larger. So again, I think that certainly in the core, historic preservation is protected. It is a a core value. It is something that will be embedded in this process and even in the national district or the area beyond that, we would give nods to the historic district. And I think really part of this plan is like, how how can we make those connections and make the the tie in between that which is new and that which is our historic beloved downtown.
And and the objective really here is is laying out the vision for what our downtown is to become. Is that right? In other words?
I don't know that this is so much a visioning exercise as it is more on certain design elements and specific connections and improvements, although I think you know, a vision piece could come out of that. I don't know that it's going to be a, here's a nice rendering of what people think the vision should be. That's more of a traditional small area plan. And I think that could be another step in the process.
All right, Kim, we're looking forward to where we go with this and and defining. I think we've already got a definition, but I don't think we've ever had the formality of having a a true small area plan that that set a balance for our downtown area, which is I think near and dear to all of us. I think what the historic preservation and and Mary Ruffin's thing does is a larger footprint. And this is kind of a subset within that. But I think. But I think defining what. What the small area plan is for Main Street is is been something that we we've needed. Just as a directive to. For lack of a better word. Set a benchmark for preservation and and. Where where we are with our downtown in the future.
Well, and part of what excites me about this too, Kim, is the idea of. Of Jackson Street and the connection to South Main and the connection. To Linden Mills, should that potentially develop in the connection to Brick House and the Hurt Hub and sort of bringing that. Together is is what I'm thinking about. In terms of small area plan.
I I agree 100% Autumn, and to me that feels like a vision for what what.
Oh, okay, then it's a vision, David.
You know, that I think that's a that's a central part, it should be a central part of these plans is to say. You know, guys, what what do we want it to look like in 20 years? And and so, you know, I think I think part of this plan came out, at least part out of discussions that we had about. Development that was happening at the the mill. The the, you know. Brian Janest and I, apparently, apparently, who were were similarly aligned with the idea of developing off the back of. Sadler Square facing the the railroad tracks. You know, how you could build a second level on those buildings facing the railroad tracks and how that have those. The retail facing to the railroad tracks. Development along Jackson Street is a natural development corridor and really generate some critical mass downtown. Now. Two, two comments to that. One is, as everybody says, I'm anti development. Which is not true. But but secondly, it with with respect to developing that downtown, and I think this is what we're talking about largely. Is that it it can be very additive, it it can create some 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 interesting downtown. Synergy activity. But but it can cut both ways and 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 we can, we can also screw it up. And so so.
I'm sitting here because of a plan that tried to do just that. Remember that.
That's 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 right. So so making sure we get it, get it, get it right is.
Okay. Thanks, Kim.
Okay, thanks for the feedback.
Appreciate it. We move on to item B, which is to discuss the fiscal year 2022 sidewalk project. I'll turn this over to project manager Doug Wright. Welcome, Doug.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I am here tonight to talk about fiscal year 22 sidewalk project. Just a quick update, last year you approved a section of sidewalk along Beatty Street. Remote Hill Apartments to North Main Street. That we will be pouring that tomorrow, so glad to see that. It's all the construction prep is done. So that's ready to be poured tomorrow. And the other active sidewalk project we have is along Gray Road and that that's moving. It's been a slog with underground utilities, but the residents along Gray have all. Expressed their appreciation. They're very happy with with that improvement. So that's two that are ongoing and with that, I'll just kind of get into the proposed projects for this upcoming fiscal year. My screen visible? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So we go look at our mobility plan, which was passed in 2019. There are a number of transportation projects identified and scored there. And included in that ranking is is number six is sidewalk infill projects unspecified. And these are sidewalk projects that are filling in gaps, usually in the older parts of town where. Our ordinance did not require sidewalk construction at that time, so just trying to fill in those gaps. And so sidewalk infill project shown here in the mobility plan. We have a mobility subcommittee that's comprised of members of the planning board and livability board. That are formed to to review mobility plan annually and make recommendations. They look at all these projects. And in terms of the sidewalk projects. Some of the recommendations from the subcommittee are are following here, highlighted in yellow. One of them, Gray, is ongoing now, we just mentioned, then there's Concord Road here. This one, Beatty Street, I just mentioned that we were doing a portion of this one here, not the whole thing, but we're doing a portion of it now. That's the one to be poured tomorrow. And then we're showing one on Main Street, just a point of clarification, we we built sidewalks six feet minimum now, that's that's our new standard. Another recommendation from the subcommittee was that we increase. Our annual funding, which traditionally been 150,000 for sidewalks. In some ways, we did that with Gray Road Sidewalk, which came in right under 600,000. So but we would like to look at formalizing an increase to that number of 150. In an in our upcoming budget year or next budget year, so that's something to consider. That's a recommendation from the subcommittee. The subcommittee wanted specifically to look at some of the low hanging fruit projects in terms of sidewalk infill. That that may not have been as as expensive and complex as as Gray Road or some of the other ones along Town Corner Main or. And some of those are shown here, so we've got Delberg Street, a portion of Delberg Street here. A Cataba Road, which is the road behind Oklahoma, it dead ends into. Lake Cornelius, it does go out of our jurisdiction, it's a little funny piece of the county that's out there at the end of that road. So there's Cataba Road, Watson Street and Jotun Street. This is specifically a section in front of Gethsemane Baptist Church. That is missing, it's just a missing section. So those are a number of the the low hanging fruit projects that the subcommittee was interested in. Another one that was on here was a section in front of. Bradford Park Drive in front of portable project there. The Public Works crew did, so glad to see that one crossed off the list. So this is an aerial of the section that we're interested in on Cataba Road. This intersection here at Cataba and Pot Street. And then as you travel here west, it kind of hits the town limits here back behind Oklahoma, that's Oklahoma here. And a lot of this section has already been built by development. Our ordinance does require single family construction to construct sidewalk now. In front of their houses and because there's been a lot of construction on this side of the street. We would be filling in the portions that development had not built and just completing this sidewalk. So this is on the south side of Cataba Road, then the YMCA is kind of back over here. This is a section in front of Gethsemane Baptist Church, over here you see Harris Teeter. Over here you see the Linden Mill, you can see from the aerial that it is a gap and it's not a really long gap here. So the church supports us constructing this sidewalk. I've been able to talk with folks at Gethsemane and they they support this and and are excited about it. So we're connecting their sidewalk here in front of these townhome units, a gap and then picking up there. So we are proposing to complete that gap. We are also looking at Public Works building that gap. And what I'd like to do is is bid it out and then see how that compared with. Our cost in house and our opportunity costs, the crew is, Public Works crew is very busy. So I just have to have to see how that would work out. This is the third section that we're interested in and it is along Delberg Street. It can see over here is Cotton Mill, this is Watson Street, this is Beatty Street. We are, the proposed construction is on the north side of of this block of Delberg. It is filling a gap in for people to be able to walk in from from this side of Beatty Street or Delberg. To walk into town to to Brick House or cross Main Street to go on the campus or a number of other destinations. We are in the process of improving this intersection of Delberg and Beatty with a. With a flashing crosswalk signal that's in process. This is also a street where a large portion of it has been built by development already, we would kind of be completing it. There's a significant amount of traffic on this road, a lot of it's coming from. Community School of Davidson and other other facilities there during the day. So this can provide safety to those residents later along Delberg Street. As well as as filling in a missing link. So the Delberg Street Infill and Cataba Street Infill were the last recommendations from the mobility subcommittee. And they were deferred in favor of the portion of Beatty Street that's being poured tomorrow. These are still the recommendations of the subcommittee, they're still very important projects. So the last estimates we got for these projects are shown here. And we're in a different contracting environment now. And and what I would like to do is, if you all are okay with these three selections. I'd like to go out and and bid them out and and see what the where the numbers come in. It doesn't obligate us to do do any of them, but it does give us a sense of how much we're looking at. And then we have that that would come back to you on September 14. For for determination, whether you wanted to go ahead. Whether we wanted to supplement the 150,000 or how you want to proceed. Also, at that time, we could discuss. Jotun Street, whether that's something that that we would propose to do in house or or contract now. So with that, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Yeah, Doug, I was gonna ask, I mean, how would you bid out internally? The Jotun Street, I mean, are you gonna? Call the labor expense as part of, I mean, there's no reason why we shouldn't be able to do it for cheaper. I mean, if we're already paying the the people unless we're talking about OT.
Yeah, so I mean, we do have a labor cost for in-house and and of course, there's all the other built in costs, you know, equipment, et cetera. We're really with Public Works Crew, I think they would like to do this job. We're really looking at at the rest of their workload and and and. Seeing how they are able to fit this in, so that's really, I think, what the determination is there. We still have to buy concrete and some miscellaneous materials, but. It it's more of a time thing for them and taking them away from everything they have to do. So I think that's really what we'll be looking at there.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand how you'd show it, so, I mean, and I know these quotes are old, but let's let's assume that the outside contractor comes in and bids 50 grand. And town of Davidson bids it at 60 grand, but of that 60 grand, $20,000 of its labor. But we're already paying for the labor, so to me, it's really a 40 versus a 50.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it it's interesting to know for us what our in-house costs are, that's important. We do have a fully loaded labor cost in there, but. I think what we're really going to be looking at is is, for instance, the the bids come back in at 50 and. What is the crew's workload and when do they think they'll be able to get to it? That's really what we're working at, looking at. They are in the process now of of do a lot of sidewalk maintenance and it would pull them away from that. And we'll be looking at how fully staffed they are, a number of other things. So I will work with with Jesse Balk and the crew on that. And and that's the the type of information that we'll be bringing back to you on the 14th.
And then sidewalk maintenance is, so within the $150,000 that we allocate in the budget specifically, is that? That inclusive or exclusive of standard sidewalk maintenance where you gotta go pull up a. You know, I saw there's a lot of work being done in River Run actually over the last couple couple weeks.
It's exclusive.
Exclusive, okay.
Yeah, 150 is capital. There the there is some amount of maintenance baked into the Public Works operation budget. And that's what they're using to do the work in River Run now.
And then, okay, and then on the Cataba, does it make sense to do this now with all the construction that's going to be happening? And the infrastructure that that's going to get put in as far as the 80 plus. Townhomes that are going in right across the street, or does it make sense to? And I don't know if you got an answer for it now, but just a question I think we should answer is, or does it make sense to do this after? All that construction's done?
I I think this will be a good asset for the residents during the construction. And just just give them a better place to walk. I I don't, I I do see there will be some impact from traffic and parking, et cetera. On Cataba from the HOPE project that we'll have to manage, but. I think that this, building this sidewalk would make it more livable environment for the residents that are there now during that construction. And I don't see any reason for. Anybody working on that site to to damage. Sidewalk on the other side of the road, this is not on the HOPE side, it's on the other side.
Understood, but famous last words.
Yeah, it 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 happens, but. I I think that this would be, I think that the residents on Cataba would would be glad to have this in place during the construction and and prior to it.
I have a request, can you go back to the previous slide, please? So on that one, when we're talking issues of safety, realizing that, as you noted, that a number of. Portions of that sidewalk have already been built. What I note for safety is the fact, if you look at the home that's on the northeast corner. At. Delberg and Watson. What's the potential of adding that one house length of sidewalk? Because then you would have it connecting all the way to the hub and then coming all the way in. The town versus literally, you would have a sidewalk all the way along that section of Delberg and then dump folks out. For a one house length of sidewalk that doesn't exist along Delberg.
Yeah, that that's correct, it is, there is that still that little gap. We we don't have enough right of way there at that house. And and there's some mature trees, so it's a little bit, that that's a little bit of 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 a fly in the ointment of this project. But I think it it would be worthwhile to see if we can add that at this time. Just to get it wrapped up and connecting, it is, this would connect to sidewalk that was constructed as part of the Hurt Project. So you're correct, this is a little, there's a little gap there and it's a little bit more of a difficult piece to cover.
Okay, and then to Matthew's point that I I agree with you that I think the safety element along Cataba Street. During construction, but just as an overarching policy, when developers do damage to our sidewalks. I'm expecting that the bill goes to them or there is an expectation of a developer replacing. If they have damaged a town of Davidson sidewalk and is there just, I I mean, I take this offline with you, but. You know, you see it routinely that if there's development on the other side. Of a sidewalk that exists, all it takes is about the third, you know, truck, cement truck that goes over a sidewalk before it's. Kind of crumbled into pieces, so. And I'm assuming that we just told folks that that's part of the the inspection process on the final end. But to Matt's point, it might not be if it's at the other side of the street, but. I'm pretty sure there's going to be a truck or two that backs up just a little bit too far.
Yeah, that's a tight road back there, the Doug, I'll I'll bet you lunch on it.
Yeah, I I'm not going to bet against somebody running over that that sidewalk. I mean, they shouldn't and we will, we'll do our best. I mean, the other thing is it's a little bit open ended to leave that construction out. Until HOPE gets mobilized, I know they're they're planning on building soon, but sometimes things get delayed and. It's sort of an indefinite, you know, timeline for the residents on Cataba, so. I I feel like they would like to see it sooner rather than later.
Is there, is there a benefit to bidding out all three projects to, I mean, will you get a better bid? Or a cheaper bid saying, hey, do all three of these together versus, well, I mean, I know there's some mobilization because it's not all one big long sidewalk, but. Do you anticipate a lower overall bid than if we had just said, hey, only do Beatty?
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, absolutely an advantage to to bidding them out that way, but also, you know, have them. They're they're submitting one bid and the bid assumes that they're going all three, but. and the bid assumes that they're going all three, but I also ask them to show each one separately and that, that's how we'll evaluate, um, Jotun Street.
While I have you on an unrelated note, the right hand turn lane on, uh, on Davidson Concord Road, there is a ton of stones in that middle section, right? You've got the straight or left hand, and then you got the right hand lane. Can we just get somebody out there to clean those things up? I, I, I don't know how, but it seems like the stones are multiplying in the middle of the road there.
Absolutely. Downer, NCDOT.
Right. Uh, back to us doing stuff for NCDOT, not the first or the last, but if we could, if we could get somebody out there to clean it up. So that a rock's not thrown through a windshield or something, it'd be great.
Okay. If, if there are any, if there's nothing more, you know, I would be coming back to you on the fourteenth with, with bids and, uh, um, discussion about, um, Gessamani, how we, how we manage that and to see where we stack up against our, our budget.
All right. So board, are y'all comfortable with Doug's proposed path forward here? Let's bid all three and then we'll come back to you with options.
Yes.
I'm comfortable with it and, and, and quite pleased to be focusing on some of this infill sidewalk. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you.
What else we got, Rusty?
Mayor, you were muted. Did you call me or?
Didn't realize I was muted. We move on to item C, review upcoming agenda items. I've been calling town manager Jamie Ju- Jamie Justice.
All right. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Betsy, for pulling that up. Uh, so just hit a couple of highlights here, September fourteenth. That's, it's a lot on here. There, we may need to do a little bit of shuffling, but I'll, I'll work on that. Uh, we do want to recognize Marsha Webster, former executive director of Davidson Housing Coalition for her long service to the community. So we appreciate that. And, and related, we were trying to arrange Georgia Kruger to be recognized for, after she retired from the Ada Jenkins Center for her leadership as well. So we're hoping to get that, we think, set up for September twenty eighth meeting. So just know that's coming. The public hearing on mobility plan text amendments, we can take that question mark off. We are planning to do that. And then we did talk about the growth management text amendments, having that presentation. One thing I want to lift up, uh, the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization is having a call for grant projects to submit for, for grant funding. And so we are thinking we will want to talk with the board of potential projects to submit there and potentially also it's an eighty percent grant, twenty percent local match minimum. But if you do put in more local match, then you can gain more points and make your project more help, better positioned to get funded. So we're going to meet with Bill Thunberg with the Lake Norman Regional Transportation Commission and talk strategy and figure out what makes sense. So we want, we will want to talk to the board about that before we need to apply, I think you see in mid, end of October. So some, uh, uh, some possibilities there. And then we are planning to talk about the CIP and the River Run, the Summers Walt Greenway, what we can do to shift that. Communications Director has recommended some replacement social media policy that the UNC school government has recommended. Uh, we just talked about the sidewalk project. We all also have our annual paving project. So we'll want, we'll need the board to actually approve that construction contract. So we're tracking for September fourteenth. And then we just added the River Run Phase Six water sewer. So that'll be on there. And then on the twenty eighth, uh, that we'll see the Washum property public hearing. If the clerk certifies the sufficiency, then we'll ask you to set the public hearing date. So that'll, annexation process will begin in earnest then on September twenty eighth. And I think that's, uh, those are the highlights that I show. Any, anybody have any questions or comments about those?
I, I have a question, Jamie.
Sir.
Uh, when, when can we expect an update and thoughtful discussion about where we are on the anti-discrimination ordinance?
Yes, sir. I skipped over reading that and that is, we were looking at September fourteenth.
Hey, hey, just a question and, and I, I'm curious to get everybody else's thoughts on this. I mean, Marsha and Georgia, two wonderful, uh, citizens of our community and we're lucky to have them. Do we want to wait until, um, hold on. Uh-oh. Do we want to wait until we could do in person so that we can make it more celebratory versus, uh, versus not, you know, virtual? It's kind of cold and not quite as meaningful to me, not in person, but there's also no guarantee we do that anytime soon. So I'm just looking for everybody's thoughts on that one.
And that's a fair point. We did kind of delay even doing this because of pandemic and then we started contacting them to try to schedule these and then we went back to virtual. So that, that's sort of just how it came about. So whatever you all think as a board, what you want to do.
I personally would, would prefer to acknowledge the years that they put in. Marsha was with, with the DHC for thirty years. I, I can't tell you how long Georgia has been involved in the community. I mean, if you count her time as the director of the Y and the outreach she put in there and then what she did to Ada Jenkins. It's thirty, she made a career here her whole life I, as an adult. Uh, and, and, and I think it, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that it would be nothing more than a, than a subtle knot of the head. Thank you. If, if we did it virtually. Um, I, I, I would entertain anybody else's thoughts on that.
What if?
Would like to do it in person if at all possible.
Yeah. What if we, what if we do a both and and make sure that we recognize them and then at the next you know, possible opportunity in person, but that we do the due recognition? Cause I mean, both of them have now been out of those roles for four and five months plus respectively. So just to make sure that we do put something hard and fast on the agenda. Um, and then tell them that we'll be looking for the next in-person opportunity. So my, my friendly amendment to, to Matthew's discussion is both and.
So we could have cake at a later date is what you're saying.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Um, one other, one other topic, sorry, was there any other discussion on it? Trying to, trying to manage, uh, an unhappy kid who refuses to go to bed in the background. So I apologize if I missed something.
No contest.
Oh, well, yeah. He's immune to that now, Rusty. But, uh, but, um, the, the other question, Jamie, I'd like staff to look into is the small cell wireless tower that's at the corner of the Harris Teeter and Woody's. So as you're kind of coming out of that stop sign, um, does that comply with the ordinance that we put in place? Because I thought that there was supposed to be some screening that was done. I, I just like, uh, Mary Ann, I, you know, Cindy, Cindy brought it up when she was, uh, you know, helped kind of usher that through and, um, I certainly noticed it right away. So just cha-challenge the efficacy of, of our ordinance in terms of what we've asked them to do, if that's truly it.
Have you not noticed the one at Equesta Bank and the one at Davidson Day School?
Yeah, I hear you. I hear you. And so, I mean, it just, uh, looked at me right in the eye the other day when I was, when I was pulling out and said, ooh, that doesn't, that looks just like every other one in Huntersville. So was just curious on that.
Um, I, I think that's a quick check to, on the ordinance. I don't think that's a whole lot of staff time. So, I, I mean, I'm happy to do just a quick look at that and if we see anything further, then maybe we need to have larger discussion, but can just handle it that way if you guys are okay with that. Okay.
And just the last one, Jamie, if we could get that intersection cleaned up with the stones. If we'd be so kind to send our staff out to however we get, get it off and back onto the side of the road.
All right. I'll circle with Doug on that one.
We can get Ernest T. Bass out there and he can start chunking those rocks. All right. Anything else?
I would just ask too that, um, Jamie, if we, if we could take a look at timing on uh, when we think we might be able to bring back um, some action on this historic, on this historic plan, some early action items and, and when that might be and what those might be.
You're talking about Mary Ruffin's thing, right, Dave?
Well, and we're, we've, 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 we've now got a, um, is it a historic plan? Is that, is that what it's called?
Yeah, I think you're referring to the historic preservation plan and I, I did report they were considering with the consultant help, they were considering some early action items to potentially bring forward ahead of the actual plan. So they're, they're looking at that now. So you're, you're kind of saying you, you have interest in what they may recommend there.
Yeah, if we, if we could look at the calendar and see when, when they might be able to bring early action items to us and what those might be. Um, at one point we, we looked at Jason had run for us the, uh, the teardowns that we have experienced in the last couple of years and the, and the pace of those. Um, and you know, we, we, we're seeing them there in historic parks. We saw the last one on Concord Road. And then of course, we've, 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 we've seen them for some time on the side. And that's not only a historic issue, but a gentrification issue. Um, so it, it seems like the pace of it is not slowing down. And if, if we don't if we don't at least have a decision to do or not to do something, you know, we, we may be making a decision not, so.
Okay, I'll, uh, circle with staff. I know they're working on this question now so we can see what they are going to recommend and let you know.
Jamie. One thing, um, I, I don't have a firm grip on this, but I, I know the concept. I, I would appreciate a chat with Eugene and the chair of the equity committee and talk a little about plans, short, long, medium. Uh, and, uh, what, what kinds of things we can be involved in. And I'll, I'll give you just one example uh, and save the rest for later. Uh, but it's, uh, it's now been a year and a half since, uh, George Floyd was murdered. And it, it's my understanding, I could be wrong. It's my understanding that we had several people go to this groundwater thing. Uh, but that since then, uh, i- in response to some asking several times specifically, I was just told that the rest of the racial equity, uh, training and discussion would be in the fall. But we're at the fall. And I, I think it's time to to, if we can help uh, set an agenda or maybe there is one and I just haven't heard about it yet. But I, I'd like to have a little discussion about that. Uh, wh- whenever you think is appropriate.
Okay, we can do, we can do some additional updates on that. We do have an agenda, have an agenda. But we also have just gone back to virtual. So that's a little, that is a little bit of the dilemma on that training. So we will rethink that a little bit. And we'll do an update.
All right. Anything else? Jamie, would you summarize?
Yeah, I think, uh, other than the agenda items we dealt with, I've got the stones at the road, historic preservation plan, any early actions. Uh, the housing inequity update, small cell tower, take a look at that. Here's Teeter and Woody's. If I missed anything, that's what I wrote down.
Thank you. I need a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Ford's made a motion to adjourn. I'll do a roll call. Mayor Pro Tim Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Fuller.
Yes.
Commissioner Sitten.
Yes.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Ford.
Yes.
Have a good evening.
Thank you all. Good night.
All right.
Good night, Betsy.